Call the Water Pollution Control Authority and Town Council meeting to order for Tuesday, February 2nd, 2006 at 7:05 PM.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Welcome.
Mayor Judy?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Fong?
Here.
Councilor Angeline?
Here.
Councilor Abbott?
Here.
Councilor Ken Loira?
Here.
Councilor Diamond?
Here.
Councilor Manah?
Here.
Councilor Miller?
Here.
Councilor Rose?
Here. Motion to approve the minutes of January 19th, 2016, Town Council meeting.
So moved with the following corrections. Page three, item six, the first sentence should read Mayor Judy. Item nine A on that same page, where it says the meeting was on December 22nd. Actually, there wasn't a meeting, that was just when the contract was approved and filed with the town clerk. And on page six, item L, that item was tabled. It was not motion, that was not a reappointment, that was tabled.
I'll second the motion.
Roja?
Mayor Judy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fong?
Yes.
Councilor Angeline?
Yes.
Councilor Abbott?
Yes.
Councilor Ken Loira?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Manah?
Yes.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Next we'll go to Water Pollution Control Authority Agenda Correspondence Citizen Statements. None. Unfinished business, none. New business, none. Citizen Statements and Petitions Under Water Pollution Control Authority, none. And we're gonna just change it up a little bit, we wanna bring in Grand List Presentation, Dave Ambrose, Assessor, under New Business, which was item 13A.
Thank you for pumping me up to the beginning here, I really appreciate it. Okay, the net taxable grand list decreased by 34.2 million dollars, or 2.7 percent, and that's all due to revaluation. The real estate net taxable grand list decreased by 33.2 million, or 2.99 percent. I surveyed five other towns that went through rebalance this year, and their median decrease is 2.86 percent, which puts us right in the ballpark. The direct tax shift this year goes from residential to commercial property, and the shift is 2.4 percent. I want to note that without our revaluation this year, we would've had, we would've had an increase of 3.5 million dollars in the real estate grand list. The good news is, so far we have over 1 million, 1 million dollars in permits since, permit costs since October of this year. Also, we have over 30 building lots waiting for a shiny new home. The personal property net grand list decreased by 2.7 percent, or, I'm sorry, 2.7 million, or 6.9 percent. In your packet, I provided you with the gross taxable change, however, I think it's more appropriate to provide you with the net taxable grand list change. With that said, we had 2.8 million dollars in account increases, 4.2 million dollars in account decreases, 174,000 dollars in new accounts, and 1.5 million dollars in deleted accounts. The big increases, UI, Big Y, Kepputaro, and Northford Ice Rink Associates. The big decreases, Brook and Whittle, ESI, Tilcon, and Shoreline Health. I will gladly provide you with a list of personal property additions and deletions upon request. The motor vehicle, motor vehicle grand list increased by 1.7 million dollars, or 1.55 percent. Now, every year, the state takes pricing of vehicles out of our hands. With that said, every year it's a crapshoot. We did have an increase, Car and Driver this year is reporting that 2015 has been the best car year, best year for car sales in a long time. I'm sure most of you are aware that the DMV had some major issues this year, lines are wrong, et cetera, et cetera. Also, we learned that 3.3 percent of all cars registered this year were sent to the wrong towns or cities. Based upon the percentage of our grand list to the rest of the state, I anticipate maybe we have to delete 80 by 80 vehicles this year. I just handed out two pages, two-page document, and it says page two on top. Because of the rebalance and the decrease in the grand list, I wanted to give you guys some tax scenarios, actually five of them all. The first scenario, I increased all expenditures, expenditures with the exception of the general fund revenues, which I decreased. And I increased, just, I increased the Board of Ed's budget by 2 percent. In this example, I did not apply the car cap rate, just as a comparison. With that said, the, the mill rate would be 33.10 for all property types. By the way, at the bottom is a summary, which probably is a little better to compare the numbers side by side. At 33.1 mils, the taxpayer would see a 251 dollar increase in real estate taxes, a 15 dollar increase in car taxes. The net median tax would be an increase of 266 dollars from the 2014 grand list. Second scenario, same budget projections, now, this time we're applying the, the car cap. Mill rate in this scenario would be 33.23 for real property. So, by applying the, the car cap, the, the mill rate for real estate and personal property has now increased from 33.1 mils to 33.23 mils. At this mill rate, a taxpayer would see an additional 276 dollars in real estate taxes, and only a 7, a 7 dollar increase in car taxes, that's of course because of the, the cap. The net median tax increase would be 282 dollars from the 14 grand list. The shortfall created by applying the car cap would be 143,000 dollars, resulting in the need to raise the real estate and PP mill rate from 33.10 to 33.23. In the third scenario, same budget, same budget projections with the exception of increasing the Board of Ed budget from 2 to 4 percent. And in this, in this scenario, I did not apply the cap for motor vehicles. The mill rate in this scenario is 33.60. So by applying the, the car cap, the, the grand list, no, I'm sorry, there's no, I'm sorry, in three, I did not apply the, the cap for motor vehicles. I just increased the budget for the Board of Ed from 2 to 4 percent. In this scenario, the mill rate would be 33.60 mils. A taxpayer would see an additional 344 dollars in real estate taxes, and a 19 dollar increase in car taxes. The net tax increase would be 363 dollars from the 14 grand list. In the fourth, fourth scenario, I, same budget projections, again, with the exception of increasing the Board of Ed budget from 2 to 4 percent, and this time, we did apply the cap for motor vehicles. The mill rate in this scenario would be 33.78 mils. At this mill rate, a taxpayer would see an additional 378 dollars in real estate taxes, and only a 7 dollar increase in car taxes, again, that's because of the, because of the cap. The net increase would be 385 dollars from the 14 grand list. The shortfall created by applying the car cap would be 200,000 dollars, resulting in the need to raise the, the mill rate for real estate and personal property from 33.60, again, to 33.78. Last scenario, we, there's no increase in the budget whatsoever. So the 15, 16 budget is the same for this year, which is the 16, 17 budget. So the mill rate with a 0 percent increase in the budget would be 31.91. The motor vehicle cap will not be applied under this scenario, because we are under the, the threshold of 32 mils. At this mill rate, a taxpayer would see only an additional 31 dollars in real estate taxes, and only a 6 dollar increase in car taxes. The net increase would be 38, 38 dollars from the 2014 grand list. On the last page, I, I'm always asked, are there any tax incentive programs that I think would be beneficial to, in this case, North Bradford? And there were three pretty good options. I'll read through these. Option one, Connecticut General Statute 12-65H. By local option, a town may defer any increase in real property assessments by means of rehab or new construction for a period of no more than seven years, number, provided the cost of such improvements to be constructed is not less than 3 million dollars. Or two, for a period of two years or less, provided the cost of such improvements to be constructed is not less than 500,000 dollars. Or three, to the extent of not more than 50 percent of the increase in assessment for a period of not more than three years, provided the cost of such improvements to be constructed is not less than 10,000 dollars. And you can see the property types that, it can be applied to. Option two, I think is better than option one, it's more flexible. By local option, again, a town may designate the town or part thereof a rehab, a rehab area. The owner of any real property located in this area who agrees to or rehabilitate, rehab his property, may enter into agreement with the town to defer any increase in assessment up to 11 years upon the completion of construction. Most towns adopt a five-year deferral program, and you can see the, the schedule below that. There's no increase during construction, there's no increase in year one, and the assess, the increase in assessment is based in 20 percent over the next four years. The very best incentive program is enterprise zone. This exemption is incentive to attract new manufacturing facilities, or to provide incentive to expand existing facilities. North Bradford does not really meet the requirements for the state guidelines, because it's, it's due on a policy levels, unemployment rates, and so on. The only other option is to designate North Bradford an enterprise zone by legislative action. It's difficult, but it's not impossible. Lost revenue through the EZ program is partially reimbursed. The owner of the real property would get an 80 percent real estate exemption over a five-year period, which is fantastic. And the personal property owner would get a five-year, 80 percent exemption for their personal property. The town which I came from, we lobbied the state for this designation, and we actually got it, two years ago, and also, Wallingford was also designated as a, as enterprise own through their local legislator, whoever, or that, may be. And that's my little brief, little commentary.
I just wanted to make sure I understand this, and I, and I actually think, you know, I've been on the council often on since 1989, and I think this is great that we have this information before we go into the budget. We're always going into it without knowing where we are and what we're doing, and we have to keep asking Anthony, what does this do to the mill rate? And a lot of times, we're doing the budget, and the grand list doesn't complete it. So, so I think this is very helpful. Just so I understand this, and put it in layman terms, if we went to Michael and the Board of Ed and said, you guys are only gonna get the same exact dollars that you got last year, we would have to go up 0.82 mils?
Correct.
Okay. And then if we gave, like you said, your modest increase, which would cover raises and, and the Board of Ed's request of 4 percent, we would be going up 2.70 mils?
Yes.
Okay, and everything else is in between that?
Right, exactly.
Welcome to the Town Council. So, I, I again thank you for all the work you did on this.
Yeah, this is wonderful, Dave.
Thank you, I really appreciate it, thank you very much.
I don't know that it's good news.
Well, it's not, it's not good news, but.
We know where we're at. But you know, I could, I could say this, you know, it's, I mean, even though, you know, we have a pretty serious decrease in the grand list, it's a, it's a reliable grand list. I reached out to a lot of the top taxpayers, and we already agreed upon the value before I signed the list, so, I'm not gonna see many appeals from our top taxpayers.
How much, how many businesses did we lose? How much did that affect the grand list? Like, all, just a ballpark number?
We lost about 1.5 million dollars, but we had one big decrease, Bank of Boston sold their, their assets. It's interesting, because I think 80 percent of the personal property grand list is made up by about 10 accounts. UI, Tilcon, they're, they're the big, big dogs on the list. We had a tough year, we had a lot of businesses moving to North Haven and other towns, so, and a lot of our pop stores just, just closed this year.
What is the definition of personal property grand list? Like, what does that mean, versus property?
Anything that is not fixed to the real estate, basically. Furniture fixtures, signs, some casing, these sort of improvements, like walk-in spit up.
Equipment.
Cable conduits, like UI stuff that's on the ground, that's personal property. Cash registers, chairs, kitchen appliances, all those, all those good things.
Who's April Acres?
That's Big Y.
Ah, okay.
With the new legislation on the cars, the 29 mil cap, or whatever.
32 this year.
32.
29 point, I don't, 34, it's only, it's only 30 next year, I, I, not much right now. So, I mean, under the last scenario for taxes, the mill rate would be under the 32 cap.
With the DMV issues this year, and with the wrong people receiving tax bills, were we able, are we able to collect taxes on motor vehicles? Or, how did that work out? Was there a period where we couldn't collect taxes?
No, it was, it always affected taxes, yeah. I'm not sure what you mean.
I, well, I had heard that, you know, since the DMV was having the issues it was having, there was just, I mean, we're, the town was not able to collect the taxes because we didn't have accurate information, registration information.
Well, that, that information would affect the billing for six, for July 16th.
Okay.
Nothing, nothing retroactive.
Right.
Any other questions?
I had a question for Anthony. How many dollars are, how many dollars are in a mil in this town?
About 1.3 million.
1.3 million. So, so basically, to hold zero, then, at 80 percent, we'd be about, we'd have to raise a million dollars.
Yeah.
To, to give everybody what they got last year.
Correct. I mean, when the grand list gets finalized, and I have the final numbers, I'll be able to, you know, give you. The interesting thing, if you recall, traditional sheet we use for the budget, it takes the amount of money need to be raised by taxes divided by the net grand list as one number. Now, we've got that bifurcated into two pieces, we have, okay, the amount to raise by taxes, how much are we gonna get out of the motor vehicle piece at 32 mils? Because we're gonna go with 32 mils, I mean, let's be realistic. And then, what's left for personal property and your real estate to get in? And then, so if you're gonna have two mill rates, you're gonna have the 32 mil rate for automobiles, and you're gonna have a different mill rate, as David talked about, for the real estate and personal property. So the sheet you're gonna see this year for the budget is totally different, not totally different, but different than the prior sheets, because it has that two different numbers picked on.
And then the only other question I have is, so in your scenario of your modest increase to, to everything, there was nothing in there modest for any, any new big capital projects?
No, the only thing that's on the horizon, and it's a little start at the 30, 30 house lots we have, in terms of, I don't see any commercial construction.
No, no, I meant, in, in this, we don't have any money for funding a new high school, a new police station, and a new town hall?
No. No capital, no capital information.
Right, so there's no money, this was just.
Bare bones.
Bare bones.
Just, right.
Just barely, you know, covering, keeping legs on and raising raises.
Not capital, not capital expenditures, right, exactly.
Okay.
Well, that was a 2 or 4 percent raise in the school budget, but nothing on the town side.
I did, I, I actually, in, in your packet, I, I gave you guys, I increased.
But I mean, on the two-page, on the two-page handout.
That includes other assumptions I made to the budget. I did increase certain areas by 1 percent, 4 percent, and I decreased expenditures, I, I decreased general fund expenditure, because that, that was the trend. Whatever the trend was for the last couple of years, that's why I applied to this year's budget, just as the trend from the last couple of years.
So the 2 or 4 percent was not just, not just the school alone?
Well, it, and, and, and the, two of the scenarios are, actually, yeah, two, it was a 2, 2 percent for scenarios one and two, and a 2 to 4 percent for scenarios three and four.
The, the town number he held constant, Mike, with slight increases, what he felt needed to cover raises, insurance, and all that?
In the packet that I gave, I provided Gina last week to forward to you guys, I mentioned the increases to those areas in the, in the big.
Right, in this one, that was in that. This one?
Yeah, that's it, it's in there. Oh, thank you. Am I in the proper glasses? I increased the town government operations, Mr. Mayor, by 4.6 percent, I increased the Board of Ed by 2 percent, and I increased debt service by 1 percent. I didn't change the rainy day fund, never gonna, if you're ever gonna use that fund, I think it was 350,000 dollars last year. And I kept the homeowners freeze, piloting the same as a, as a thousand dollars, so, I didn't change any of that, just those three items you see here. Thanks for anything else, I'm sorry.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dave.
You're welcome, very much, thank you.
Thank you very much. Very informative.
Yeah, it's obvious, a lot of work.
Mike, before Dave at least, did we need him to discuss this elderly tax?
Oh, we could certainly do that.
He prepared some of these numbers, didn't he?
Yeah, yeah, if you want to jump to that, yeah. Yeah, so this came, I think the mayor had asked, we took a look at, this is item 8A, review of the North Haven's elderly tax freeze. They are in the process right now of, of, of public hearings and looking at a draft or modifying their ordinance and the program they have for tax freeze. The way I understand it is that they're looking at an age of 70, a five-year residency, and they have not yet defined the asset limitations or definition of, of asset cap. And the, one of the other key arguments is that they do not want a lien or a clawback in terms of that accrued difference for, from the tax freeze. So, that's what they're wrestling with, they're still going forward, had an opportunity to talk with the mayor, they're going forward with public hearings and a committee, I believe, that they formed to, to look at this. And, so I brought it back to the, into the context, I know in the past we have talked about this, and in 2000, in fact, 2014, this council approved the increase of the, of the allocation, budget allocation from 75,000 to 100,000, under the local option program that we have, that allows for a 300 dollar credit. So, just kicking it around with Dave, thinking, okay, you know, if the town council was interested in doing it, what would be the, the downside of, in terms of the lost revenue from the population? And again, depending on how we define our population, what the criteria to know who's eligible, try to come up with sort of the worst-case scenario, and that's where Dave, you know, jumped in to, to run some numbers on, and, and look at the program the way we currently have it, and, which seems to run, run pretty well, but looking at if we did this opportunity for a tax freeze, so that's what he came up with.
And I think under, I think, I think our local option, what we have here, our program right now, I think we give a 300 dollar flat, flat discount to people that meet the income requirements, and the state program is even better than that. So, under any scenario, our current program, which is, again, predicated upon income, would be better than the tax, the tax freeze that North Haven is, is thinking about implementing. My, my suggestion would be, if you want to offer more benefits to, to seniors, I would tinker with the local option, maybe increase the income, something you could think about doing, or maybe increase the dollar amount, the flat fee. It's a lot easier, I think it's a lot, it's a lot better than the tax freeze program. I think it's, again, what we have right now is better than, than the tax freeze that's North Haven's, that North Haven's trying to.
Is that what you're projecting here, is a freeze for seniors, and you're, and you're trying to project how many seniors own homes, have a senior property in town?
Right, it's a guesstimate, but, and, right. Yes, Deputy Mayor, and I think, I think the net revenue loss by increasing the amount of seniors, because now it's not predicated upon income, so our, I think the, the, I think the loss would be about 350,000 dollars, the town have to.
So that kind of leads into my question, because it says revenue loss 574, 560, correct? So is that revenue loss from the town not collecting those funds?
The 574, yes, yes.
Okay, so then.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So then it says revenue loss for current seniors is 225, what does that mean? That's what we do now.
Right, so if you, if you, so if you base.
We have that fund of 100,000 dollars to cover that.
No, I'm saying, if you threw out the current program we have now.
Yeah.
Just throw it out, and, then the total net revenue loss would be 574,000 dollars, 560. I'm subtracting out the people that are currently on the program, which is 225. So the difference between those two groups is 349,000 dollars.
The people that are currently on the program, it's a maximum of 100,000 dollars.
That is the local program, there's also state program that provides a discount between 250 and 1250 dollars for, for seniors or, or individuals that are totally disabled.
So how does this?
So we have, we have two programs, we have the state program.
So you're combining both programs?
Right, that, rightly, right, on the, the 225, the revenue loss, that's for both local and the state program.
And are we experiencing that now, without doing anything?
Yes. It works, it works very well. Sorry, I'm sorry.
That is our current loss?
225, yes.
Over and above the 100,000 dollars?
No, that includes.
That includes, that's the local and state together.
100,000 dollars is the pool of money available to the people that. 100,000 dollars is the pool of money available.
To offset that loss?
No, 100,000 dollars is the amount of money that you budget it for, for. No, the hundred thousand dollars is the amount of money that you budget it for for people on the local option. So people that are on the state program, which the income cap for, let's say, just married is forty-two thousand dollars, forty-two five, okay? Local, the local option increases the, increases the income limit by fifty-seven thousand dollars. So everyone that's on, everyone that meets the forty-two thousand dollar threshold also gets our local option of three hundred dollars in top of the state program. And then the people that are, the income is between forty-two and fifty-two, just get the, just get the three hundred dollars tax relief. And the federal tax relief per individual taps from the pool of hundred thousand dollars. The pool that was increased from seventy to a hundred thousand dollars, was it seventy or seventy-five? Fifty-five to a hundred thousand dollars.
All right, so we're already experiencing an aggregate loss of two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars without doing anything.
Correct.
And what you're projecting here is the additional loss if we adopted the prototype being looked at by the town in North Haven. We have an additional three hundred and fifty thousand dollar loss of income.
That's correct.
Okay.
So then that would equal three forty-nine, five sixty, plus two twenty-five?
Right. So it equals that five seventy-four that he has.
Okay.
See, by, to tax freeze, doesn't have, doesn't have, doesn't have any income, income restriction. So anybody that's over sixty-five can be eligible. So that's going to increase the number of eligible candidates.
And the projected freeze would be for what period of time, one year?
It's a one-year, it's year for year. It's a one-year, it's a one-year application process.
Well, I didn't think that's open for definite, you know, definition in terms of where you want to set the different factors or the different variables. I mean, you could set a one-year residency requirement, five-year residency requirement. You could set the age at sixty-five, you could set it at seventy. There's a few factors, and how long do you set it? Do you renew it every year, or, you know, you're looking at, you know, five-year, ten-year? I mean, there's a, this is, these are soft numbers, you got to know, because it's undefined.
Yeah, I was just trying to figure out how the math was all adding up.
Yeah, it's just, it's sort of just kind of give you a flavor for what would happen, or what, you know, what the impact would be.
I'm sorry, Mike.
No, go ahead.
Number of seniors, two thousand four hundred, that's, I'm on the census site, and they did give that number for any senior that's sixty-five and older. Well, they defined senior as sixty-five and older. They didn't have any category for seventy or older. So I couldn't provide you with that information.
Any more questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we'll move into the regular town council agenda. Reports of boards, committees, boards and commissions, permanent project building committee.
They did not meet in January, and they will not be meeting in February due to lack of business. I believe they'll meet in March because they'll have the warranty for the roof and to finalize the TDS roof project.
Next is economic development commission.
Yeah, the economic development commission met last night. They had a presentation by Rex Development, and Councilor Arman, Councilor Miller were both present for that. It was a pretty lengthy discussion, a very healthy one. I think it was probably an hour, over an hour, hour and a half presentation with Q and A about the benefits of Rex, and Rex is a regional economic development body that, that works with businesses. And a lot of it is about marketing, business expansion, retention, and so forth. And they, I think they've got some pretty good resources. The commission, like what they heard, and is, is probably most likely going to come back through this budget process with a recommendation that the council consider a request to join the Rex Development Corporation. And that, that's an annual fee of about forty-three hundred. But with that, their thought process is that, rather than, again, and I, I, maybe I'm getting ahead of myself, but this is what I think is coming, and they, you talked about a grant writer, talked about an economic development person. I think this is probably the biggest bang for the buck to go in the route of Rex Development. I think they agree. I think they're still formulating their, their, their request. But they, they see it as a resource that they could leverage to get some help in terms of marketing, site, you know, site location, you know, different contacts and networks. So I think it was a very productive meeting, very, very positive. I mean, certainly Councilor Miller or Councilor Arman can, can certainly chime in as well. But they're moving along with the business visitation, trying to put, pull that together. And various other, you know, programs are looking at the small business acceleration projects as sort of a grant and loan program from the state of Connecticut. So they're, they're, they're exploring a whole lot of options with respect to economic development, so.
Thank you. Park and Recreation Commission?
They did not meet. Lack of quorum. They'll meet in February.
Police Commission?
Police Commission will meet next Monday, February eighth.
Fire Commission? We have their minutes in our budget package. Chief Sourd?
Yeah, Mayor, the Board of Fire Commissioners meets this Thursday night. Again, it's a public meeting. It's held at Company Three, nineteen fifty-eight Middletown Avenue, at seven thirty. And I just kind of, just quickly update the town council as to the status of the fire department. Last week, the apparatus committee traveled to Wisconsin to do a final inspection on Tanker Three. It has a short list of items that are needed from either Kenworth, the manufacturer of the chassis, or the manufacturer of the tanker, U.S. Tank. And I would expect that to be completed and delivered to the vendor in North Haven within the next fourteen days or so. It will come back to the town, it gets lettered, and then training begins before we put that in service. The status of the fire training facility, we anticipate that it will be completed about the thirteenth of this month. In actuality, I had a gentleman from the Department of Building Services from the state of Connecticut visit us yesterday. Was very much impressed, and this individual is responsible for coordinating the rehabilitation or building of fire training facilities for the state-designated schools throughout the state. Multi, multi-million dollar projects. Was very, very impressed with what we've done here in, in North Branford. And he basically said, you know, this is what the state should be following. They can't, because a lot of contracts have already been signed, but this is really what the direction in which the state should be going in the future. I was directed by the Board of Fire Commissioners to order communications equipment. It's being programmed as we speak, and it's ready to be installed in the North Haven Police Communication Center. And this is in response to the October seventeenth failure of our nine-one-one system and the lack of the ability of North Haven Police Department to dispatch North Branford Fire Department as the rollover site to nine-one-one. So I would anticipate that installation and test process should be upcoming. And finally, I've applied for the two thousand and fifteen Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program, which is funded by the United States Department of Homeland Security for communications equipment, both fixed and tablet systems, to improve our communication infrastructure. Unfortunately, it's not, and I was kind of dumbfounded on this, but it's not allowable to use this federal funding for fixed sites. So what does that mean? I can't, I could not use it for something in the dispatch center, and I couldn't use it for any of our repeater, satellite receiver, or transmitting points. So it's mobile and portable equipment, and iPads for all the vehicles. And that grant is just shy of two hundred thousand dollars. Very often, it's up to a year from when you apply that you get information back from DHS on these grants. And if we're so awarded, our local match is five percent. So again, to date since two thousand and five, we've got about one point three million dollars in grants out of the Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program, and we just hope that we're successful this time. Thank you.
Chief, did you have a meeting on the regional communications?
I think the town manager may provide you some insight.
Yeah, that's scheduled for February eleventh. That'll be in Wallingford, and the, in addition to that meeting, hoping to invite our representatives to North Branford to help us with some additional questions we may have. But essentially, the meeting on the eleventh is to talk about their evaluation of the two sites in Wallingford.
Thank you. Town Planning Goals Subcommittee?
The Town Planning Goals Subcommittee met yesterday. We're continuing our needs assessment. Next Wednesday, February tenth, the Diversified Technology Consultants that the council approved will begin their first site visit at the police department. They'll come about two o'clock in the afternoon and start their tour. We will then, as a committee, meet with them at four thirty, kind of talk to them about the kinds of things that we want them to look at so that they, you know, do a complete needs assessment in terms of the facility deficiencies, also including the police union in that. Mike and I are going to meet with them at four o'clock prior to the four thirty meeting and give them an opportunity also to participate in the survey. I also hope I'm working with the police commission, commission. We've had one session on identifying, they're, what they see is the needs assessment, and I'll do that again with them next week.
Thank you. Board of Education and Town Council Communications Subcommittee?
I think there's got to be a, a action by the council to populate that and then pick a date.
Next is the town manager's report.
Yep, we, we covered that. It was only one item, eight A.
Okay. Committee of Events and Presentations?
If I may, I would just like to compliment our fire department today. I know there was a fire that was very severe up in North Branford, and my understanding is they saved the home, did a wonderful job, and no one got hurt. And I'd like to commend all of you. Great job.
Next item, citizens' statements, petitions, and correspondence.
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to make a few comments in regards to clarify some of the comments that were made by Councilor Rose at last week's, or the meeting, the last meeting regarding the administrative contract. One of the points was that the Board of Ed and the town council did not meet, which the state statute says that they shall meet, but we actually did meet, and it was on September fifteenth at six thirty prior to our council meeting. So we did meet the letter of the law with the Board of Ed. They actually had sent notice in August about the upcoming negotiations, and it was actually a suggestion of Councilor Rose that the Board of Ed come to the council and meet with the whole council rather than just one person from the council going to their meeting. So we did have that meeting with the, with the, with the Board of Ed. Also, the contract that he talked about in regards to the twenty-seven percent increase, it was not a three-year contract, it was a four-year contract. It was for two thousand and three through two thousand and seven. And in that contract, yes, there was a very large increase during that timeframe. And that contract, but there, that was just one piece of it, was the wages. There were two major items that the administrators gave up. And one of the big pieces was unfunded liability that the board would have, and that's the payment of sick days in their contract. And the way their contract read is they could get paid up to two hundred and forty days their current work year. And in calculating that, at the time that contract was negotiated, it was a nine-member union, and there were currently three to four members that met that criteria of their, that they had to be employed by, for fifteen years and excess sick days up to a maximum of two hundred and forty. That unfunded liability, in calculating it out, is at least a quarter of a million dollars. So that was part of the reason for the increase. When that contract came to the town council to have action taken on it, in looking back at the minutes of the council, the council did vote to reject the contract, and it was unanimous amongst the seven members that were there that evening, which sent that contract to arbitration. So that became an arbitrated award for that contract. So I just wanted to make those points noted in looking at that.
So since you brought that up, then I'm going to have to respond and say, you know, that can be all well and good that we had this meeting. And I know, Rose, you love to call it a bump and run.
What the bump and-
There's nothing about a bump and a run. So here's the thing. So we had this meeting, nobody has given me minutes on it. And what I was told by the last town attorney is that that meeting, which all the years that I was involved in the council before the current regime of the last dozen years, we had an executive session meeting, and the town council gave a direction, like the state's, you know, statute said it should. And that is what is taken as the last best offer if you go to arbitration. If we went to arbitration, there's no last best offer. So the point of my rant was, number one, the test scores are terrible, no one could argue that. Number two, we have the highest-paid administrators, nobody can argue that. Number three, if, in the world of government, if there are no minutes, it didn't happen. So you can all say that it happened, and it did happen. But there's no minutes, there's no record, there is no direction from the town council written down that could be taken to an arbitrator to be the town's last best offer. That's how we lost the teachers, because there was no last best offer. When the Board of Ed and the superintendent negotiate a deal, and then we are stuck there funding it, if we want to send them to arbitration, there's no offer. So I think in the future, we need to bring the board in, and we need to do that before this year's teacher's contract. And we need to get back to the way it should be. We need to have rules, there need to be minutes. And the town council has to say, you know what, you go in and negotiate, we're looking at three ones, or we're looking at three twos, or we're looking at three nines. But then at least there's a last best offer that can be arbitrated. And that was the whole point of my rant. And you can pick out the little, you know, the little things that did happen and didn't happen. There are no minutes, there was no last best offer, and there was no direction given to the, to the Board of Ed on where the town laid its bid. And as the, as the tax assessor showed you tonight, I'm glad I didn't run for office saying I'm going to cut taxes.
Well, if you wanted it to be an executive session, there are no minutes from executive session, so if that-
Every executive session I've ever thought in, the town manager is, is taking notes.
There's no minutes from, there's no minutes from executive session.
Well, then we do it in an open session. There need to be minutes, there needs to be an offer.
But that would-
If you're going to do it in an open session, you're not going to have a six thirty meeting unless you call a six thirty meeting. It has to be a called meeting.
It has to be an agenda item.
Like I said, this whole bump and run, and imaginary, one person will go meet, that's not what it says. The financial board needs to meet-
Right, and that's why, that's why he suggested that they come to the whole council, which is what they did.
We need to give direction, and there needs to be something written down that backs it up. That's all the point of the story is. Now, again, I know you got, you know, you got all bent out of shape because I said you were on the board when you did the twenty-seven percent raise, but you were.
I was, I, I'm not disputing that fact.
You were part of it. I thought you were nuts then, and I didn't change my mind on that, you know? I mean, that was a crazy raise, and all the documentation of where they're, how they're making this money. And, and you know what, it's like, if, if, if we want to continue as, as usual and keep getting these things in the eleventh hour, fifty-ninth minute with no documentation and no recourse because we didn't have a meeting with minutes and a last offer, you just keep going, you know? That, I'm not going to be part of that. If I'm sitting here in the fall, we're going to do it right. And I almost think we need to have, we need to have an attorney come in. Either, if, if he's a good labor attorney, fine, if not, find us one, and explain- if he's a good labor attorney, fine, if not, find us one, and explain the last best offer. Because I've been told we're losing because we're not giving them an offer. We're not, we've stopped giving them direction and, you know, you sat with us when you were on the Board of Ed, you came into the room and we gave it, we gave direction. We're like, you know what, we have no money, we have, or go with three ones, go with three twos, okay? Or explain to me, where was the last best offer on this one?
We all sat here, we all had the opportunity to do it during that meeting.
And again, get me the minutes.
Al, help me with something. You said you've been on and off for the past 25 years, correct? Uh-huh. When you do this negotiation, are you provided with a list of salaries from the area of other towns and the variable you met with, you mentioned with sick days, you know, obviously that's, that's a variable, salaries a variable, you know, they're...
Right, and those would be all the things...
Are you provided with that so you can make an informed decision in your tenure? Because I'd like to know, if I'm there, I want to see what the other towns are getting.
You're right, and that's a point that, that should all be brought to us at this next meeting this fall.
Because I heard, yeah, they, yeah, they got a bump, but they surrendered sick days. You know, I would like to see a chart as to who's getting...
Right, and see just where they were.
We belong to CCM and they can provide us all that information.
So that's a very good point, though. All that documentation I had, that Anthony and I got from 20-plus towns that had all that and had what the other towns were paying for their insurance, which, you know, what they tried to say, oh, we just bumped that, we just brought ours up to that, we need that for the formal meeting when we're going to try and, you know, give a, so that's a very good point. We need to get all the information and the paid personnel needs to bring it to the table instead of a couple volunteers having to spend time finding it.
You also said something about equating teachers' salaries or administrator's salaries to test scores.
Uh-huh.
Where else is that done?
Well, that's done in the private sector on every aspect of everything and, you know, that's, that was my opinion. Naturally, any public servant doesn't want to have merit paid because they don't want to have to be accountable.
No, because I've never seen the police, the police salaries, you know, equated with prime rates.
You're at the top of the game, you're the one, you know, in the corporate world, when something goes wrong, the top guy's head rolls. That's where I got that theory from. When my company does something wrong, they don't yell at the janitor, they don't yell at the guy sweeping the floor or driving the dump truck, they yell at me.
Got it.
So I'm going to hold people at the top, making more money than their peers accountable.
It's not the private sector.
Al, in Rose's defense, she is a Republican and she's conservative, the same as the rest of us. She doesn't want to spend any more money and she don't liberally spend money, so, you know, we got to call it the way it is.
Yep.
Well, on a lighter note, I'd like to congratulate North Branford High School. They've been named to the Sixth Annual College Board Honor Roll for the school's AP course participation and success rates, including students earning scores at a level to earn college credit. This year's honor roll features 367 school districts across the country. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry to interrupt. Public...
Oh, please do. Please do.
I think what's happening is you've got some new people, you've got some old problems. Time to shake the shades, open the windows and let some clean, fresh air in. I come up with this buzzword, you're, you're suffering from triple-C disease. And first of all, commitment, it might be there, it might not. Al brought up a good point. Is it time, because you are a business, is it time to have two meetings in December and every month? You people are responsible for a huge amount of money and a huge amount of town actions. When you take time off, the town comes to a standstill. And again, I'm comparing you to a business because I came from the business world at the phone company. If there's a deal out there and you're the owner of the company, you have to act fast to go after that deal or somebody else will. Twice a month, you meet, sometimes big deals, sit and sit and sit and, and no action is taken because this gentleman here has to get approval from you. I'd like to see some ramping up of commitment by attending a minimum of two meetings a month for the whole year. Because like Al said, you missed some important dates and maybe, again, if there was a scheduled meeting, it would have been caught in time. Again, you're volunteers and I understand you have private lives, but you've also made a commitment and we at the polls elected you with that commitment in mind. The other thing is communication. I'm always going to hit you with this. You can all spin in circles and have your own agendas, but if you don't talk to each other, you're never going to accomplish anything. So you have to have a massive communication system in place that works. And again, the big complaint is sometimes the stuff coming down the trough doesn't get to you in time for the meeting. I mean, that's one communication object I'm hearing about. Today, I had a problem with the town website trying to get the agenda. The new drop-down menu didn't have today's date in it, so I wasn't able to click on the second to get the menu. It was corrected, again, because I take an interest in what's going on here in town. I don't want it to turn into Guilford. I moved from Guilford to this town, I love this town. We still care, we're still family. The next thing is coordination. There's got to be coordination, too. I mean, it's got to happen because you are tasked with a very big task. So again, personalities have to kind of blend, coordination has to come to a point. I mean, Al did bring up some good points. I won't get into the subject matter, but again, timeframes and, I mean, like, if I had a doctor's appointment, I put it on my phone and the calendar thing goes off. If you've got a commitment by a certain day, a buzzer should be going off in somebody's agenda and it should be addressed. Again, that was, if you could get the continuity flowing by having meetings every month, twice a month.
You're talking about town council meetings?
Yes.
Like during December and January?
Yes, because it's too long and there's too much going on and there's too many dollars that are being held in limbo. Now, this is kind of something I wanted to address. There's a serious planning and zoning continuing public hearing that's coming up again, I believe, Thursday. There's also Board of Ed budget meetings and other conflicts. Is there some way that the town council could vote to prohibit them from closing this public hearing on Thursday night? I guess there's people that need more input. It concerns what, the restaurant near Jerome Harrison School, he wants to make some changes to the liquor laws, I believe. I might be off key here a little bit, but I know there's some concerns that brought up on our North Branford Proud, our one and only news source. You know, that there's some concerns of parents about what could happen so close to the school and with the parking issues at the school and stuff. But the Board of Ed should be, because they own the school, they run the school, they should be allowed to have input, but they've already committed to their calendar for Thursday night. Now, I don't know, again, the legalities of it. If the planning and zoning decides to close the public hearing, shouldn't there be some input from all of you and the, and the town manager? Hey, look, there's a scheduling conflict, keep the public hearing open for another month? I mean, it's getting kind of nitpicky. I've been trying to watch it a little bit and I'm not first in it. I mean, I'm a coffee drinker, so, I mean, that's still legal, I believe. About beer, wine versus hard liquor versus standing there drinking it or sitting down to the table, is it a restaurant, is it a bar? You know, and there's so many issues here that I think they're going out on a limb and trying to make some kind of permanent ruling that might have some really serious long-term effects on businesses in town. And again, with the school and the parking issue being such a serious situation, I don't know how he can even become before planning and zoning because I think you're still holding an ace in your pocket where he hasn't fixed the parking lot yet, right, Freddie? You've still got an issue with the, I mean, I don't even know if that's been addressed. You pressured him that night, he was here, he promised to do it. We don't even know what's happened with that. So there's a lot of things there that are, and again, I just hate to see planning and zoning close the meeting and then the Board of Ed does not have any input because they've already had it on their schedule when they were going to do it, go into more budget talks. So that's a question I have. I don't know the legality of it. I don't know if you can issue a strong letter?
Michael, they posted the public hearing.
Right.
Is it through February 11th or February 4th?
It's still open, I believe, right?
It's, it's still open. I don't, I don't know the answer to Cliff's question and whether or not there's any time constraint. There, there may or may not be, but I would think they would have the option if they took this up on their own, which they did, that they could potentially extend beyond this public hearing for, for another one, although, okay, Kurt's nodding his head, yeah, so that's, that's a possibility.
I think their window closes next week, the normal 35-day, whatever period, but they, they can grant extensions.
Well, I think, you know, it should be a strong letter from the town manager suggesting they do it because I know there's lots of people that want to be two places at once and the Board of Ed's already made a commitment. I think they should have, as a property owner and as control of the adjoining area, you know, we had a big issue up in Norfolk about the liquor store, right? And he was too, so close to the school and the church. I mean, these guys are right in the, the school's backyard.
This isn't the first public hearing.
Oh, I know.
This is, this is the third public hearing.
But again...
It's been continued and continued.
Well, I would like to see it continued.
This isn't, this isn't the first time.
I understand that, but they keep rehashing, what is it? I don't think they've come to any real good, strong conclusion, do you?
Oh, not as yet.
No, but I'm saying...
Not that I've seen.
But I think they're treading on dangerous turf because they're trying to come up with something, I think they're over-legalizing it to the point where they might tie too many people's hands. I think we need guidance, but we don't need overruling. Is that a good way to put it? But again, shouldn't the Board of Ed be there to stay their side of the story?
But I think George's point was that it's the third hearing, so the Board of Ed has had opportunity because there were other public hearings.
But again...
Unless that they didn't have Board of Ed meetings that they could have attended.
But nobody's...
So they did have the opportunity.
But nobody's addressed it. The school's so close. I mean, it's never, I've, I've been trying to watch it, being semi-good, and thank God for our cable TV people because of YouTube, but it's like, they keep going this way with its suggestions and they go this way with the suggestions. I don't think they've landed on any hard, fast facts and I'm speaking completely off the record and uninformed. So I mean, but I just feel there was enough of a uprising in North Branford Proud that, sure, this meeting's important, but the Board of Ed won't have a chance at this point because of their budget meeting. So I think we're just looking for a commitment for an extension because if they do close the Board, the public hearing, the Board of Ed wouldn't have any input. Because I don't think the Board of Ed was aware, again, because of, it kind of crept in from, and have you watched?
Well, basically, what you're saying is they weren't notified.
I don't believe they were officially notified. Did you get anything officially?
No, we were not officially notified, but there was an email sent out asking for our thoughts and I believe a letter is before an email that is going to be coming forth to Michael tomorrow. I mean, I don't want to speak out of turn.
Yeah.
I do not want to speak out of turn, but the consensus from the emails that I'm getting is that we don't want to push other businesses out of town.
Right.
It's a nighttime thing for the most part.
Right.
Maybe some proper signage in the parking lots.
You know, yeah.
That's the direction it seems to be going from our emails, but Mike, you should be getting an email tomorrow.
Yeah, they, it was communicated that they would have an, Board of Ed would have an opportunity to submit a letter for the record, to be entered into the record.
But again, shouldn't they be allowed to get some, you know, feet, like, I, I can read your minutes.
Yeah.
But you get so much more if you're here where you can interact slightly with the, with the council and get your feelings. An eight and a half by 11 piece of paper doesn't do it. And I'm just going to end with something that, I'm a very strong believer in paperwork. I came from a military background and we had a saying, we controlled radio communications. If it's not in the radio log, you never heard it, you never said it, and it never was transmitted. You do need a paper trail to protect yourselves and everything else that's going on. And why couldn't your charter be amended or redesigned to include minutes from executive session? They could be kept confidential where only you would need to see them, but again, you need some kind of permanent paper trail. Joe's a lawyer. You don't go into court without background records, right?
Sure, why not?
Well, you're good at what you do. How could you not argue with that face? Again, it's just, again, it's just tighten up some of these loose ends and we're going to be a great town, but there's just minor issues in, and you're new people, so again, a fresh start is what we wanted and we, we got it. Let's make it work.
Cliff, let me clear something up. I read the calendar of our meetings because I transcribed into my, my home calendar. Is it nine out of 12 months that we meet twice a month? Is that pretty much?
Correct.
It's nine, so you're talking...
No, I'm talking, I'm, I expect you to be...
And we have the right to...
We have a conflict on Election Day because that's a Tuesday.
Yeah, right.
And we have, you know, November, the third meeting in November was close to Thanksgiving or...
But we can make a meeting in addition if we have to.
Well, but that's... Well, but you could also schedule them and cancel them if you had them etched in stone. In other words, why do you want to put square wheels on a round, a vehicle that needs round wheels to keep moving? You, you just need the continuity and if you had the meetings there, you could always cancel them.
I could tell you this, Cliff, and, because you mentioned one of your points with, one of your C-words was communication.
Yeah.
And I, I'm new.
Yeah.
But since my landslide election victory in November...
Well, yeah.
I'd just like to tell you that I've been in communication with most everybody here on this table regardless of party and I've never had a problem, so...
So far, but you've only been here, how long?
I'm just, I'm very optimistic that this will continue.
I am a, I am a long-term listener to this council. I, I see the history of where things go. I'm being polite, I would never, ever insult anybody here behind the board here because you all are donating your time. I, as a citizen, just, I'm making suggestions on how things might work slightly better. Cancel the meetings, but schedule them because you've missed, you're, you're running my business, my town, my tax dollars. I expect, and you committed, you ran, you wanted to be voted in. Now it's my turn to say, now that you're in, represent me.
And just one other thing, how many meetings will you go to this week alone?
But did you know that when you ran?
No.
Okay, well, then, then step down and let somebody come in.
Yeah, this week it will be two, it'll be three for Dan.
I understand that, but did you know that?
Four for Marie.
I have a cotton back, actually.
All right, well, if it's too much, step down and get somebody from your party to fill in.
All right, all right. We're not getting anywhere here.
Thank you.
And if I may just point out, although it wasn't anything unusual, Public Works did a spectacular job with the snow.
Right.
Absolutely.
All right, next item is resignations and appointments.
Okay.
Appointment of Allison Karen to the Solid Waste Hazardous, or Solid slash Hazardous Waste Recycling Committee. Term to expire 12/117.
Second.
No, that needs to be tabled because that has not, that recommendation has not come from any Democrat or Republican town committee.
How did you know?
Solid waste.
Oh, they said...
Made this recommendation at the last meeting, so it was just continued over.
Do you know what the ladies' party affiliation was?
Yeah, I found out today, she's Republican.
So you guys want to take it up at RTC?
Yeah.
Which is tomorrow night.
Okay.
So we should take it?
Right.
Motion to table that?
Move the table.
Second.
Mayor Denny?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fana?
Yes.
Councilor Angelina?
Yes.
Councilor Arvin?
Yes.
Councilor Kandler?
Yes.
Councilor Bennett?
Yes.
Councilor Miller?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, appointments to Board of Education, Town Council Communications Subcommittee. Looking for volunteers.
Rose, Anthony, and I did it of you guys implying to continue.
And the meeting dates that were set originally were the second Monday, is it the second Monday of the month at...
They're alternated.
At six o'clock?
Six o'clock.
So that was, that was the meeting time. That's the meeting time that was established. Now, it could change once the committee meets again, but that's originally what the meeting dates were.
I'm happy to continue doing it, but I'm also happy to let somebody else in here who's really charged up about doing it.
You going to do it again, Joe?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
I feel the same as Joe.
Well, did we, was Joanne a regular member?
No, she was an alternate.
She was an alternate, she just used to come over.
We can have four on the, up to four without it being a form. The meetings are posted, they're open, you know, I mean, they're public meetings.
There's no agenda.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Three's fine.
That's what you got.
Do we have to make a motion? Do we have to make a motion?
Make a motion to appoint.
I don't want to make the motion.
I'll make the motion.
Yeah.
To reappoint.
Joe, Anthony.
Joe, Rose, and Anthony.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Mayor Dooty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin?
Abstain.
Councilor Angeloni?
Abstain.
Councilor Arvin?
Yes.
Councilor Candela?
Abstain.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Appointments to Public Safety Communications Committee.
I would like to be a part of that.
And I would also want to be one for that.
Fine with me.
I think it's two.
I sent, well, I did, I don't know if you got it, I sent you the ordinance that we had previously gotten. I think I sent it to everybody.
Yeah, you did.
So, it had specific...
Two with one alternate, I think.
Two with an alternate.
Yeah.
Want to be the alternate, George?
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay, so you got Marie?
Yeah, I pulled it out, you're right, it is, it's two members appointed from the town council, and one member shall be appointed from the public at large.
Oh.
Yeah.
Two members from council, one member from public at large.
And I think Fire Commission, Police Commission.
Yeah, this is a, yeah, right, the others are specifically mentioned as Fire Chief, Police Chief.
Oh, I see.
Well, why don't we appoint two people that we have?
Motion to appoint Dan and Marie to the... Public Safety Communication.
Public Safety Commission, Communications Committee.
Second. Second.
You're third.
Roll call.
Mayor Dooty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Arvin?
Abstain.
Councilor Candela?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Abstain.
Councilor Manah?
Yes.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Next is appointment, appointment to the East Shore Health District.
We'll have to defer appointing a public member until we come up with somebody to nominate.
Correct.
Right.
We have a council member, though, right?
We have a council member on the East Shore Health.
Well, we have two positions on the Board of Ed, on the Board of Directors. Bill Chody is one of them, and then, so we need one.
So, Chris...
I'd like to nominate Chris Manah.
Yeah, and I'd like to second that.
Okay. Anybody else? Roll call.
Mayor Dooty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Arvin?
Yes.
Councilor Candela?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Manah?
Abstain.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Yes.
And that has a term of six thirty eighteen on it.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda under appointments, and it's to amend the agenda to item E, Appointment of Liaison to Planning and Zoning.
I'll second that.
Set, roll call.
Mayor Dooty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Arvin?
Yes.
Councilor Candela?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Yes.
Now, I'd like to make a motion to appoint George Miller as the liaison to planning and zoning.
I'll second that. How do you feel? Okay, I'll second that.
Don't ever treat a woman as if they want to do it.
Roll call.
Mayor Dooty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Arvin?
Yes.
Councilor Candela?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Miller?
Abstain.
Yes.
Okay, and now I need to make one more amendment.
What are you going with?
I'm going with the change in the ordinance on solid waste in recycling, reduction in the committee from...
We're also short on pension. We lost one regular council member and one alternate at the election, and we're meeting next week, so if anybody's interested in getting on pension.
We lost Nucalo from the Fire Department, and who else?
We lost, we lost Joanne's spot as the regular, Minnie Gabrielle was the alternate from the council, Nucalo from the Police Union hasn't been replaced, I think those are the only two vacant.
All right, so the Police Commission has to replace him.
Police Union has to replace him. Police Commission has two vacancies as well, I think they have one vacancy, I'm sorry, but the council has one regular and one alternate spot as well, vacant, for the meeting next week.
Anybody interested?
That's what, a four o'clock meeting?
Four o'clock.
Yeah, it's an afternoon meeting, but it's only once a quarter.
I mean, I can do it if, I can make a four o'clock, unless someone else wants it, but...
All right, nominate Rose Angeloni to be the regular member of the Pension Committee.
I'll second that.
Want to amend the agenda first to add that?
Put it on the agenda?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, amend the agenda.
I'll second that.
Didn't Rose already made the motion to amend the agenda?
No, she was about...
I was, but we'll take Anthony's suggestion first, so we'll, so the motion is to amend the agenda to appointment to pension.
Then I have, I have another one to amend the agenda.
Okay.
All right, motion to amend the agenda is made and seconded.
Mayor Dooty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Arvin?
Yes.
Councilor Candela?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
I'll move to appoint Rose Angeloni as a regular member of the Pensions Committee.
Second.
Mayor Dooty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Abstain.
Councilor Arvin?
Yes.
Councilor Candela?
Yes.
Councilor Devon?
Yes.
Councilor Manah?
Yes.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to amend the agenda to eliminate a position from the Solid Hazardous Waste Recycling Committee due to the ordinance change from twelve members to nine.
Second.
Mayor Dooty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Arvin?
Yes.
Councilor Candela?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Okay, the position that was held by Abigail Walston, which has expired, her term has expired, I talked to the town clerk today, and she said if we could make a motion to just eliminate that position, then that will get her down to, get it down to nine positions, which was the ordinance change going from twelve to nine, because there was one vacancy, one person resigned, and then eliminating this position would get it down to nine, and then we would be okay. So my motion is to eliminate the position of Abigail Walston from Solid Hazardous Waste Recycling Committee.
Second.
Do we know that this person is willing to sit down?
Yes, yes.
Oh, okay.
Mayor Dooty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Arvin?
Yes.
Councilor Candela?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Manah?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
I move to amend the agenda to add a liaison to the Economic Development Commission.
Second.
Mayor Dooty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Arvin?
Yes.
Councilor Candela?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
I move to appoint Dan Arvin as the liaison from the town council to the Economic Development Commission.
Second.
Roll call.
Mayor Dooty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Arvin?
Yeah, oh, abstain, sorry.
Councilor Candela?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Manah?
Yes.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
That's it? We got any more add-ons?
I had to amend.
Next is unfinished business, discussion and action updates to the defined plan document Police Union. Table of July, nine, two thousand...
No, but make a movement, and the TA is, was affected today, so we'll have this on the agenda for the sixteenth.
Review and approval of draft C-MED memorandum of agreement, table of December eighth, two thousand and fifteen.
Yeah, this is, you've seen this for a couple of times now, this is sort of the ongoing transition, and this, we had a little hiccup with the agreement in terms of Pat's review with language, but what, we're okay, I've talked to Pat about that, we're going to address that, the minor change was about giving specific language to the towns to opt out, which the group has agreed to do, to look at after, after the new year in terms of the, or as we proceed into the new year, we're already six months into it, so Pat and I are okay with moving forward as this agreement was written for the remainder of this, this year, and try to address that language change down the road.
Make the most suggestive motion on it.
There will be a meeting coming up, I don't have a date, but later this month, this group will be meeting again, and I'll be putting forth that to the whole group, in addition to West Haven, who was point on this, working with, with Pat, their council. So we'll have that circulating, and again, it'll be something we'll work out in progress.
Chief?
Sure. I heard something that's really near and dear to my heart tonight from a resident. I teach a program for, for a federal law enforcement agency, and it's called three Cs to success, and that is command, control, communications, and collaboration. That's how we work today. So if we don't have communications, there's a problem. So with regards to the MedCom agreement, I would like to see a copy of that before it's signed off by the town council, as the primary EMS provider for this town, and really the only person and only department that has any type of interaction with MedCom. But more importantly, we had a significant issue with MedCom this past weekend. We needed a paramedic unit to intercept with the crew. Our crew called MedCom, got no answer, called the phone at MedCom, got no answer, and through communications, AMR picked up on it, and their unit responded without being dispatched to meet up with our crew. That's a problem. That's a problem. So we can discuss agreements all we want, we need to make sure we communicate exceptionally well when we look at providing emergency services, and the MedCom operation, as it was put forth on the table by those communities that left C-MED, all agreed, this would only be for one year. It was a trial, and that trial basically ends on June thirtieth. So here we are halfway through this trial period, there is still bugs in the system that have yet to be worked out.
Did they find out what the failure was?
I'm waiting for a report back from MedCom. Remember, MedCom is AMR. MedCom is an organization that was started by AMR that we're paying separately to provide a service. And I want a service that we pay for that is effective and efficient.
I have a question, then. Let's say, let's say scenario that we decide we're not going to assign, what happens to us?
What are our choices?
Well, we haven't paid a single dime since it started on July first.
I know, but don't we need their assistance? I mean, what would happen to us if we weren't part of this group?
Well, if there was any bite in an agreement, up till now, we would have been evicted.
Oh, because we haven't...
We haven't paid it since then.
Paid into it.
That's right.
But, what have the other towns that are a part of it?
Have the other towns?
Done, have they paid? Some have paid. Michael, do you have that information?
I don't know, have the town, list of towns that have paid, no. But there are towns that have effectively signed off, there are eight towns within this, we might be probably the last one to, to sign off on the contract, or the, I should say, the agreement, but I don't have the full...
And I know some towns had no question and no concern about what was in, in the document. All they cared about is that they saved money from what they were actually paying for C-MED.
But don't we have to be with...
We have, we have, we have to have a mechanism to communicate to the hospital, that's right.
Right, so if we decided not to sign this agreement, what would happen?
We have other options available.
Like what?
There's at least three other organizations that other towns are working with right now to do the same type of service.
The ones that we had discussed a couple of months ago.
Correct.
And I thought we dismissed those, is this being the best one?
Well, guess what?[1471.11] That was before it was put into place.
That was before it was put in.
So I'm telling you, there are still bugs in the system that need to be worked out on a daily operational basis.
So basically, Chief, you never got a copy of this before it went?
I have seen a copy some time ago.
So you didn't see this, this particular copy?
I have, not yet today.
Yeah, I mean...
Have you?
Got to realize that there's an admin side, and I've said this all along to the defunct CMed board, there's an admin side that is made up of the political leaders of the towns, and then there's the operations side, the MedCom side, that is made up of the fire chiefs or their designee that work with the MedCom system every single day.
Chief, I'm detecting something of an undercurrent here that has nothing really to do with this agreement. This agreement has been generally available and wouldn't be denied to you if you had asked for it several months ago. But what I'm detecting tonight is a dissatisfaction with what happened this past weekend, as precipitating...
Not the first time.
...reconsideration on your part as to whether or not we should be party to the agreement, irrespective of what the agreement says.
There's things that need to be straightened out, absolutely, from an operational side of the house.
So what you're really saying to us is defer action until you can figure out what the problem is, and whether or not it can be remedied, before we bind ourselves to this agreement.
If I'm going to pay for a service, I want it 100% operational, you're right.
And you're going to have an alternative.
Correct. And there's, believe me, there's other alternatives out there.
There's alternatives. There's alternatives in towns that touch us.
That's not a question in my mind whatsoever.
That touch our town, so...
But didn't we look at those other alternatives at one point and dismiss them?
They were discussion only before they become operational.
Michael, is there any detriment to us if we don't act on this agreement tonight, let the chief try to figure out what happened to him this weekend?
I don't see how it can hurt us. I think, you know, I mean, certainly we'll sit with Bill, and I'm not, I don't have all the details of what changed. It has been, it's processed, Bill's been at the table, and we'll work this out. But to your question, if we defer or you defer, no. And we bring this back on the 16th? No, I don't think there's any downside to this. We're, they're not going to kick us out of the group, it just, we'll be the last one to sign, if we sign.
I think we ought to back our chief.
Yeah, make a motion to table this until our next meeting.
I'll second that.
Can the chief have everything he needs?
Absolutely.
Make an evaluation?
Yeah.
When will that be available to him?
Yeah, and there's not, again...
I'll give him, I'll give him, I have this for him right now.
Take my copy.
Here you go, sir.
Mayor Diddy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Collin?
Yes.
Counselor Adelie?
Yes.
Counselor Arvin?
Yes.
Counselor Kennero?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Manis?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Next is new business discussion in action. We already covered the grant list presentation, resolution of endorsement, what's that, South Central Regional Council of Governance, RPIP grant application.
Right. Yeah, this is the, I put an extra, I put the motion in front of you as an added piece of paperwork, but this is the request from the COG that needs the towns involved to sign off and endorse this. This is an opportunity for them to pursue a grant for the planometric data development and regional open space inventories, part of the GAS information systems that they have that's available to us within the region. So it's a great opportunity to get more layers in the GIS system. So they need the formal approval that the town, each town will endorse this application.
This is kind of a no-brainer, there's absolutely no reason not to do it.
Exactly.
Upside.
Only upside to that, absolutely.
I move to approve the proposed resolution submitted for the endorsement of the South Central Regional Council of Government application for a regional performance incentive program proposal. It supported a planometric data development and regional open space inventory.
Second.
Mayor Diddy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Collin?
Yes.
Counselor Adelie?
Yes.
Counselor Arvin?
Yes.
Counselor Kennero?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Manis?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Next item is potable water program, Cedar Lake Road area, water main project.
Good evening. Basically, this is just a reauthorization of the Cedar Lake Water Agreement that was entered into as a state. The water main is all done, it's been, it was done a couple of years ago, water service connections were all done. The one outstanding item is a few properties that we have to just go through and abandon the wells. Something that, I'll be honest, it's just sort of got put aside, but it does need to be done according to the state. It's 100% state funded, but they put the onus on us to make sure it all happens. So basically, that's, it's the same agreement that was put into place before. Again, the only real change is it's for smaller amounts, about $27,000 for abandonment of four wells, which should be more than enough money for it, and it's 100% funded. It's just, the work has to get done, the goal is to get it done this spring.
So these four projects are hooked up to wells now?
They're all hooked up to city water, all the properties along Cedar Lake Road have been hooked up, and operational for a couple of years. This is just sort of the last final closeout part of it, which is sort of a pain in the neck sometimes to try to find all the wells and locate everything. One of the wells, the property owner built a patio over it, so I just got, my goal is to get an exemption from the state, there's no feasible way to do that.
Have you communicated with all the property owners and we're not going to get any...
Yeah, I've talked to them, I had them sign something early on, giving us the right to do it all, and they're all, shouldn't be an issue with any of these people.
So this basically covers feedback going into the public water system from a private well?
Yeah, I mean, they're all disconnected, they, the connection, so there's no cross connection, that was a concern water authority will always have when you're doing the connection, they allowed it, all that was disconnected. It's just, the physical from state, the, a well casing is a conduit for some potential contamination into the groundwater, and they like to have that eliminated. They have to pull a pump, that's pretty much it. And there's a couple of wells are real shallow, one is just a dug well, so it's, it's just a matter, you've got to get a well driller to do it, so.
All right, I will move that it be resolved that Michael Paulis, Town Manager of the Town in North Cranford, be and is hereby authorized to execute on behalf of the Town in North Cranford Personal Services Agreement Grant Contract with the State of Connecticut, complete Cedar Lake Road Water Main Extension Project. In addition, that Michael Paulis, Town Manager, is further authorized to provide such additional information and execute such documents as may be required by the local, state, or federal government in connection with said contracts, and to execute any amendments, resolutions, or revisions thereto.
Second.
Vocal?
Mayor Diddy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Collin?
Yes.
Counselor Adelie?
Yes.
Counselor Arvin?
Yes.
Counselor Kennero?
Yes.
Counselor Manis?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
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 Next item is review of budget schedule. Any conflicts?
Yeah, I'm not going to be here the 15th.
I can't do the 19th.
Not much you can do about it.
Is April 13th the last date due to when the date of the budget referendum is and everything that we have to finalize the budget by? Is that the...
I think it's, yeah, I think it was April 15th.
No, I just didn't know if, if, you know, if we didn't meet all, if we went to our second meeting in April.
Yeah.
If we finalized it on that, if that's too late.
No, I don't believe so. Anthony, I mean, those are...
I have to page someone out of April.
Yeah, I think those are optional dates in there, but I don't think it's going to be too late.
I'll make a comment on the Saturday things, you know, we only started doing that with the, you know, like maybe five years ago. Saturdays are tough for me, you know, I have to work on every Saturday all year long, so it's difficult for me to make it, so if we've got two other people missing, I mean, we did it for years.
Al, I can't do Saturday. I work Saturdays too.
So I'm wondering if we don't just do it more at night?
Yeah, I do work, I work Saturdays many times as well.
And I'm sure some of the other people that we'd have coming on Saturdays work, I mean...
Well, I think we did, I think we did it when we had a bigger grant list, but I think it's going to be tight. So it, I don't think it's going to take that much time at night if we do it some nights.
I agree.
I don't know that it's necessary to designate an hour for some departments, you know, all due respect to Franny, he usually takes about 15 minutes or less. Parks and Rec, the same thing. Board of Ed, the Fire Department, they do seem to take an hour at least.
Do you want me to look at some, what, what day of the week then? You want to keep till Tuesday and move these Saturdays?
Well, they can be part of the budget deliberations, is that what you're saying, Al? Just that on the nights that were scheduled for budget deliberations?
Yeah, maybe we, maybe we do that.
Put another budget deliberation day in or something.
Is, have them on those, on those nights?
Is that, is that too late, though?
No.
Plug one in the beginning of April? Before, before the public hearing?
You could do that.
Or maybe a couple of nights in March.
You have, you have there, the 15th is really the, the catch of, I mean, that's, that's just scheduled there for other departments by request, so you can really use that as your placeholder to tell me, you know, which ones that night you want to, you know, prioritize start. Oh, to the 17th?
About like the 22nd, like Tuesday, the 22nd.
Yeah, anything after the 17th is fine.
Tuesday, 22nd, Mike?
I mean, could we do the two Saturdays, like Tuesday and Wednesday, right, right then? The 22nd and the 23rd, I don't know.
You might be able to do them all one night.
You just have to, that is holy week, just to let people know because of Easter is early, that Easter's March.
So whether the 22nd or 23rd, is that a Monday, Tuesday, or?
Well, the 20th, it would be a Tuesday, Wednesday.
Tuesday, Wednesday.
I'm just saying.
Tuesday, Wednesday.
It's really Thursday, Friday, Saturday, the critical days.
So you want to go back to back on Tuesday, the 22nd, and the 20th, Wednesday, the 23rd?
It doesn't make any difference to me, I'm just putting that out there.
For most people, that would be, because usually it's a Thursday, Friday, Saturday, the critical day.
Yeah, so Tuesday, Wednesday should be okay.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's all right.
Okay. And so we'll scratch, we'll scratch Saturday, the 5th.
He probably could, he probably could squeeze it down from an hour each department.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Definitely.
15 minutes, 20 minutes?
Except for the Fire Department.
I'll compress it this year.
No, compress it. It's going to compress a speech.
So half hour increments or smaller?
Yeah, half hour should be good, right?
Yeah, because if someone is, if the next group is here, we can just go right to them, it doesn't matter.
Okay.
They're open meetings anyway.
We'll scratch the Saturday, the 5th, and the 19th.
So you revise that and just send it back?
Yeah, I'll revise that and resend out, yeah.
Next item is review of Auger Property House and Barns and Other Town Properties.
Yeah, we had talked about, I'll send, Kurt had actually done a nice job putting this kind of giving you aerial color and thing, but we brought this issue up with talking about the haying of the field and talking about the barns and so forth, so, you know, we're at a point now where we're discussing with Larry Auger and, you know, explaining that what we'd like to do is carve out the front half of the fielding where the potato and corn festival we have, and just bidding out the back portion, allowing Fran to maintain that and take over the, I guess it's called the milk barn, is that the, yeah, milk barn, for storage, for our purposes in storage, so just wanted to give you, give you an update on that, that's where we're headed in terms of trying to get some space and more control over what's going on in the, on the field and the festival site. Just a quick update, and Fran is certainly here to answer any questions you may have, but...
Fran, you don't need the pole barn or anything?
Yeah, wouldn't you take both barns?
Well, I mean, I'd love to have, we have to store stuff, but I think we can negotiate that, it's, we need cold storage, I think it's a good idea to start using some of the buildings because they're, they're there.
Yeah, you could put the cooker.
Yeah, would the cooker fit in any of them?
We have other, I have some other plans for that whole storage situation, but yes, there's, a lot, we can store a lot of stuff there, we have a lot of stuff that, there's equipment, I can go in the pole barns, there's all those home inse cured trailers that we have, we have two, two of them.
Why, why don't we just lease out the back property and keep the front property?
And keep the whole front.
Town.
And then the whole front part, the whole I P R barn?
Yeah, the fielding back, the hay and lot in the back, and all these, the barn, this, this is the back, so all the front property will go to there.
So then you would cut the front property? That would become now?
Yeah, Auger House, right here in Barnes.
That you would have to take care of that, right, because they wouldn't be haying anymore where the festival is?
No. That's the police department.
True, yeah.
The house is right up on the ground.
The dog park's going right behind you.
Yeah, I forget who asked, but we also, you know, what, what you do with the house, or what's the future use of the house, so had Carrie just put together what, based on zoning, what's possible.
What's that, Mike?
Yeah.
The, the cover sheet there is, is from Carrie, because one of the questions was, well, in addition to the barn, the field, and so forth, what do we do with the Auger House long-term, what, what's the play, you know? So, you know, I think somebody, you know, rec, raised the issue, could it be a doctor's office, a professional office space, what have you, and so she wrote out what would be permissible under there in that memo. So you could potentially have a business or professional office in there amongst a few other things, and very, very limited, but you could potentially, if you, as a group wanted to decide to move in that direction.
I can't see it sitting empty, vacant. Fran wants to... Oh, wait, 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 we're losing so much money every time you talk.
Right.
Well, no, seri, I mean, seriously, the, the front part of that lock gets used a lot now, the public is there, and we, I think we shouldn't really open it up to them, there's people there every day, but the barns and all that stuff, I mean, right now it's just hay, but we can definitely use the storage. We had a lot, I got, I got four evictions this, this month alone, which my back garage now is full of household stuff, the assholes. So we're, you know, we're getting squeezed out of our own shop, just, yeah, it's a sign of the times, but, you know, I'm thinking about cut, we cut a lot of it anyway because cross-country uses it there in the summer, we have parking problem up at the park as it is now, so we could use that for some overflow parking, you know, we're going to cut it like maybe once a month or whenever until we need, you know, for a festival, obviously we'll cut it all down. But we have the buildings there, we should be using it, and I, I suggested this before, but I think the money that, whatever we get for rent for the back field, that we really need to reinvest the money into the buildings there, because they all need to be painted, the house needs to be painted, whatever we do with the house, whether it stays the way it is, clean it out, because there's no money to take, I mean, we don't have money to paint it, or fix the roof on the house, the barns roofs got done, the Ad Commission did that grant, but the barns need to be painted, the big pole barn needs a little bit of work done to it.
So when people are evicted, you have to clean it out?
No, I mean, the town has to hold it properly.
Oh. I didn't know that.
Yeah.
I didn't either. Well, it's 15, well, 15 days.
Is there a storage fee that they're charged?
Very small, yes. Usually nobody comes against the stuff, that's the problem.
If they don't come and get it, would, do you have to dispose of it?
Do you auction it, or what do you do?
We auction it, we have a holding auction, and then whatever's left, we have to river it. I've only known a couple that people came and got the stuff, but we had a big one this past week. We used to have to pick it up at the, on the town property at the site, the sheriffs used to bring it outside, and then we used to have to pick it up and call it to the garage, so they changed the law, now they bring it to us, which is a lot better, but we do have to store it. Dry storage.
So the house, we're talking the house for commercial, you don't want the house, you just need...
No, I mean, if they would use, I, 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 I have to tell them, I want my office in there, they'll be going to use it, because we either, we have to put something in there and clean it up, and it needs to be fixed anyway, you know, like you said, a commercial thing, a commercial's good, but residential, I'm totally against it.
No, I never, I never wanted residential, I'm just looking for a commercial, you know, whether we give it to a commercial Realtor and get some feedback that way.
Put some money into it.
Yeah.
I think you got to evaluate the building.
Yeah.
You know, and see what it needs.
I mean, it needs work, the inside, I mean, it's nice, but it needs work, without that, to have somebody go in there and put an office, like an attorney or something like that, it needs, you know, it needs work, and it's been closed up right now, it's full of...
Well, that, that's where, that's where it's negotiable, you know, if they do the work, then, you know, we sign a longer term lease, you know.
What would it take to evaluate what the house needs to be put in use?
Depends upon the use.
Yeah.
Depends upon the use, plus the septic system's probably going to have to be upgraded, I'm sure, with the incapability, incapability, well, yeah, but that's not going to matter as a septic is.
But you could live in there as an office without too much trouble, right?
Well, yeah, I mean, yeah, for sure, I think, but knowing that the, and plus we're doing the golf park is going over that area too, so there's going to be a lot of, a little bit more activity going on around there.
So we should get a price on what it'll cost to upgrade the septic and fix it?
Yeah, that's kind of like, that's my point.
And versus what it'll cost to just raise the house, you know, take it down?
Right.
Because it might not be really worth investing.
I don't know if there's a story, I mean, other than the fact it's a, it is a big part of history in our town, but, and it is, I don't know how the historical part of it...
I think, I think it is on the registry.
Yeah, I, I never checked that, but it does have the date, 15, 40 or something else.
It's on the historic list, and what we could do, and what we can't do.
Can you look into, I'd like to figure out, you know, right, what it'll cost to make it occupyable, as we're saying, or what it would cost to, you know?
Well, I mean, I can tell you what it's going to cost for the roof on the pinky outside, but...
And the septic?
Like Joe was saying, that, that, if you don't know what's going in there, you can't really do anything to the inside, other than pour a top two four of the base sand.
That, that's why the suggestion was, you know, get it to a Realtor and see if there's anybody interested in commercial property in North Cranford, you know, and then seeing it, how much it would cost, or if they would pick up the bill to refurbish it. So I mean, that, that's our next step, and same way with the, with the Old Town Hall building, you know, whether it's, whether it's a machine shop, yeah, or the senior center, whether it's a machine shop, whether it's a doctor's office, whether it's, you know, whatever else could fit in there.
That's a shame too, that's, if you get somebody in there.
I mean, the...
It's just going to be territory, you can hear that now.
And next thing will be, we'll be raising everything, and we'll have vacant pieces of property there, town could have generated some income from. Carrie, look at Foxham Road, or she didn't look at that?
Yeah, Fox, that's, yeah, for the senior center is a B1, so, you know, like you said, there could be, you know, to a, you know, cafe, bookstore, internet cafe, what have you.
Can we find a commercial Realtor to look at that?
Uh, sure, yeah, we can.
Look at those two properties?
Yeah, because it's still got that kitchen in there, so it may be, you know, for catering purposes, I don't know, somebody might, you know, get in there to rent it, you know, got potential, some potential.
Yeah. Next item is, let's see, yeah, Donna Lassente for the Connecticut, for the Dan Cosgrove Animal Shelter Quarterly Report, I can see that.
Yeah, this is something we started a while back, and Donna's the representative, has come on a quarterly basis, we're a little late this, this quarter, but I think we had some reporting issues, but we have a report, and she's here to tell you about what's going on. Thank you, Donna.
I just put together a few items that I wanted to talk about, and just basically tell you that the commission has done a, with the help of obviously the Allora Bourbon, the the director of the animal shelter, uh, the staff and the volunteers. All of us together, uh, we believe we've done a really good job in raising a lot of money. Uh, we do a lot of fundraisers for medical reasons, uh, spay and neuter, uh, to help the different towns, of which I'll explain later about our town. But since the beginning of this past new fiscal year, we have raised about fifty thousand dollars uh, towards animal care. We raised just twelve thousand alone for the end of the year donation. We send out a mailing, um, to those that have helped in the past and anybody that we can get to be put on our mailing list. And that, like I said, brought in twelve thousand dollars. And this goes towards veterinary care surgeries such as, a few months ago, a dog was hit by a car and that dog required four thousand dollars worth of surgery. That came out of the fundraising. Um, special foods, medicines, they neuter, we have rabies clinics every year. Last year, we had a rabies clinic where we had given out vaccinations to seventy-five dogs and cats in Branford, in North Branford, for free, in microchipping. So that was, um, a good alleviation for those people that could not afford it in the towns. Because as you know, it's a, it's a law to have a rabies vaccination. Uh, Laura Bourbon has written two grants, one we've already received thirty-five hundred dollars for in the dog handling training classes and new adopter training classes. And basically, and that's for thirty-five hundred dollars, that's how much it costs to bring the trainers in. And basically what it is to train volunteers that will be handling the dogs and for those people that adopt our dogs, they're given free, free lessons on how to handle their dogs, which I think is extremely important. Because a lot of people just assume that you take a dog home and it's going to adhere to whatever personalities are in your home. Uh, we are still waiting for a grant for our much needed shelter generator. That generator is going to cost us about sixteen thousand five hundred dollars. Um, we had, um, we were trying to work out something to get a used one from Branford's Public Utilities, uh, but that kinda fell through. We have raised money, um, this past year. And we have a fund that we don't, we have a lot of money in the fund. Uh, for instance, last year we, we raised ninety thousand dollars during the fiscal year. But Laura likes to just keep fifty thousand dollars of it just sitting. And the rest, we use, like I said, for rabies clinics, spay and neuter, uh, medical needs. Uh, in regards to, uh, North Branford, we impounded for, since July, uh, the beginning of the new fiscal year until December, end of December, uh, we impounded nineteen cats, thirteen were adopted, thirty-three dogs were impounded, nineteen dogs were redeemed, fifteen dogs were adopted. There were seven owner releases. Uh, they were able to adopt eleven kittens from North Branford, twenty-three critters they took in from North Branford. And this is rabbits, guinea pigs, hamsters, people that could no longer take care of the animals and of course the children had lost interest. Um, so that's, you know, it's really nice when people can go to an animal shelter and bring the animals they can no longer care for. Uh, we have helped six North Branford families by taking in their animals because the owner was hospitalized. Uh, these are considered safe keeps. When the owner gets out of the hospital and is able to retrieve their animal, it's no cost to them. And they either come and pick up their animal or we drive them back. And again, that was for our town. We have also provided many North Branford families with food in order to feed their animals uh, because of hardships, loss of job, divorce, et cetera. In addition, uh, we have paid to have twelve North Branford families going through the financial difficulties to get their animals spayed, neutered and vaccinated. And as I mentioned, this all comes from the fundraising. We have started our humane educational school seminars, which we have every year. Uh, we go into some of the schools in Branford, and I know there's like one or two in, in, uh, North Branford, uh, into Evergreen Woods, in Hostess, in Branford Hills, we provide the shelter animals, uh, for therapy, you know, especially at Hostess. Because that's important, you know, it gives them a sense of feeling of compassion and comfort for those that are not doing well. Uh, Laura is also chairing a subcommittee for the state task force developed and volunteer program manual for other shelters to utilize. We're pretty well known in the state of Connecticut for the good things that we do in our, in our animal shelter. So I think that's extremely important. Uh, there have been over three thousand vitters, visitors that have come through, uh, to the shelter this current fiscal year. We developed a new volunteer program for our shelter to better suit the volunteer staff and animals. And they are, they have to, they're required to pass a written test and physical test of cleaning and handling the animals before they can begin volunteering. Uh, this to me is really important because, uh, humane education is really close to my heart. Every year, we have, uh, and it's been going on for six years, it's an animal camp uh, that actually Laura had started. And we're hoping to get the animal camp started and have it proceed for six weeks and that'll be from May to August. And the summer camp is typically held at Young's Pond in the Branford Recreation Center. And we accept fifty kids per week and there is a waiting list. Uh, it's one hundred and thirty dollars per child. It includes various animal experts, dog trainers, wildlife experts, having, and they have the animals for on-hand experience, field trips. Uh, last year, they brought in, um, some alligators, wolves, pigs. The program last year alone generated eighteen thousand dollars. So, again, that's additional revenue for us. Uh, I am working with Yumis LaSala, one of the other commission members in Laura, on formulating a plan to promote humane education in Branford and North Branford. Uh, we're going to try to use the integration of the Medigrees program, which I think some of you might be familiar with. Uh, because children do have an affinity for animals and it highlights a lot of the characteristics of animals and the coordination of children. Do you have any questions?
Do you guys have a booth at the festival?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Donna.
I'd like to amend the agenda. I promise it'll be quick. I need two. You gonna call G, the curbing in Pacilio's parking lot?
Okay. Did I make a motion? Second that.
Oh, we'll do that one, then I'll do the second one.
Okay. Somebody, um, that's your motion, second it?
Yep.
Roll call?
Mayor Dooley?
Yes.
Senator Mayor Fana?
Yes.
Counselor Angelina?
Yes.
Counselor Arden?
Yes.
Counselor Kendall R.
Yes.
Counselor Bennett?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes. And then, uh, we'll go with H as, um, and this would be brief tonight, but I think we need to talk about it. Um, text amendments and how they, how, how people are notified.
Second that.
And text amendments and zoning, to zoning regulations. Yes.
Senator Mayor Fana?
Yes.
Counselor Angelina?
Yes.
Counselor Arden?
Yes.
Counselor Kendall R.
Yes.
Counselor Bennett?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
All right, we'll move into, uh, H, uh, curbing in Pacilio's parking lot.
G, right?
No, G.
Or G, sorry, G.
So, I don't know if everyone here is aware of it, but, um, you know, I heard this and then I, I actually checked with Kurt and Fran. So, you know, uh, Pacilio and his attorney came before us and, uh, you know, we, uh, some of us reluctantly, some of us very happily, you know, wanted to give the guy a shot at using the town road for parking. So, we set the standard on, we set the rules for where he was gonna put the curbing. And it was gonna be, um, you know, a whole bunch of people had to decide about it and then Fran Marola was gonna decide on it. And he was gonna need to do this before his, um, temporary CO, heading towards the final agreement. And very disturbingly, um, a guy who wants the town to enter into an agreement with him ripped the curbs out a day or two after his temporary CO. So, so you guys that think I'm nuts, we'll have Fran and Kurt talk to this and then, uh, just file it away for when we're gonna try and make an agreement with this guy.
So we're talking about the curbing that we wanted for the snow shelf, correct?
That's correct.
And?
Well, we'll, we'll let Kurt talk.
Well, maybe.
There's a couple of things, and, and a little history. There was, um, an approval for the Pacilio's, uh, facility, um, initial approval had, that, that's in place, that has angled parking along Merrick Drive, where they had to, they could only go park or enter within their property. And that's where the curb was put, that was put before they had the temporary CO to confine the parking to within their property. Um, the town council basically authorized granting of an easement they, um, with a, within the town right of way, sort of, um, subsequent to that original approval, but prior to them putting the curb out there. Um, basically, um, with the concept of granting them an easement so they could, they could put some of their parking in the town right of way. And then sort of the, the general caveat, make sure there's enough of a snow shelf so that Fran, Plowey, it will all work. So there was, there was sort of, um, two approvals. So the first approval, they got a temporary CO, they put, they put a curb in pretty mu- within their property that kept all the parking within their property and provides angle parking. They've gotta go back to P and Z to get this final revised site plan that will grant them permission, that would show parking within the town right of way, which would sort of, with the configuration that works for Fran for the, um, parking lot layout.
So did they go to P and Z yet for that?
They're scheduled to go Thursday.
Oh, okay, so that has not been approved yet by P and Z?
It hasn't been approved.
Okay.
And they don't have an easement, there's a draft easement, but until they have an approval by Plan and Zoning, they can't finalize the, uh, the easement to allow the parking. So that's what, I mean, that's where things are, just to, um, yeah, they took out the curbing, which absolutely, you know, that, that curbing was in there to confine everything within right of way and to conform to their original approval from Plan and Zoning.
So really, they shouldn't have taken out the curbing?
They shouldn't have taken out the curb.
Because they don't have the approval from Plan and Zoning yet?
Yeah, they don't have the approval from Plan and Zoning, they don't have the easement for the town.
And they don't have the easement agreement?
Right.
Or anything, okay.
Yeah, and they get the schedule.
Right.
Again, hopefully, things progress.
I have another question, um, my brother sits on the ZBA, so, he told me that, um, Pacilio's put their dumpster pad, three feet onto the town, right of way?
Yep.
I mean, this guy doesn't look at a map? He knows what he's doing.
Absolutely, he's been told, he's gotta move that. Um, because he applied, he applied for zoning, ZBA, um, and that's part of the, uh, the plan. They applied to get a zero setback requirement for that.
Do you, do you?
It's on the town property. ZBA has not acted on that, that's correct.
Does Plan and Zoning also know that his employees park in the school parking lot?
I, I've heard that, I mean, that, that certainly will come up.
I mean, this guy violates every, every law out there.
Uh, there's some issues and, again, they, they definitely, the dumpster, um, I mean, my, my recommendation, I got a draft revised plan, is move the dumpster. Simply put on your property, if you misput it, you gotta relocate it. That's.
Well, it was, and I saw.
But there's no rule for that.
It was twenty foot, you had a twenty foot, it had to be, the dumpster had to be within twenty feet of the road, is that right? And he wanted?
They have a variance, I, I, I believe, and I may be off a little bit, to be within a couple of feet of this, of the, the town street line.
They have a variance for two.
However they put it, a couple.
Right, they had already gotten a variance.
They have a variance for two feet.
Two feet.
And then now they're looking for a zero.
A zero setback, yeah.
Now they put a part of it on the town right of way. And my recommendation, they gotta move it.
Put it back.
Put it, put it where you gotta put it. I mean, if, if they wanna ask permission, I already told them, you, you can, you can ask permission, but don't count on getting it. Um, because you put it, it shouldn't be on town property, very simply. Um, it's not like it's a, it, it's a structure. The structure shouldn't be there, it's not like the barrel that, that someone can just easily, they gotta move the fencing.
We have a zoning enforcement officer that can swing by.
This does not comport with my recollection of what we did. We're, we're discussing this from a defensive posture, like somehow we're going to ask them to comply with the law.
No, no.
We didn't give anybody an easement. They came in and asked for an easement. And specifically, what we agreed to do was to give them a license, which by its nature is revocable.
Right.
So if we don't like what they're doing, we revoke the license. So he should understand that whatever rights he's exercising can be taken back as quickly as they were granted. That's number one. Number two, that license was conditioned upon him meeting with and satisfying Fran Marola that his construction and his parking layout was going to meet Fran's needs to have free access to Merrick Drive and be able to snow plow without interference. Third, he was supposed to stay on his property for his dumpster, as far as I recall. So, none of this should come as a shock to him that if he needs a revision to his site plan approval until he complies with what he agreed to do with the town, he doesn't get anything. And if he's got a temporary CO, he may be looking at losing the temporary CO as well. So let's stop being apologetic and being critical of ourselves. We tried to accommodate him, if he doesn't want that accommodation, we can very easily revoke what we gave him. And there was one other thing, he was supposed to give us an indemnification for any damage to any car parked on his property if snow happened to hit a car and damage it because they were parked too close to the street. So I don't know if that's happened either.
There, there's nothing executed, there was a draft and it had the wrong description, so it, it's been, been held in abeyance until they get their approvals for the parking lot layout that.
Nobody should be talking about easements. Nobody should have granted him any accommodations until he comes into compliance with what he agreed to do with the town.
Yeah.
And there shouldn't be any further discussion of this. Do it, or we revoke it.
So Joe, were you aware that he had, uh, taken the curb out?
No, what do you think, I go around parking lots and check where the people are taking the curbs out?
Well, no, but that's why I brought it up, because it was brought up to my.
I'm not personally for bringing it up, I'm just saying, we're, we're sitting here talking about it very defensively, like we gave this guy an easement and now we're stuck, we're in that stock.
I totally agree.
We gave him a temporary right.
Here's the thing.
He can lose it in the blink of an eye.
Right.
And he doesn't have anything at this point, nothing.
Right, see, we haven't finalized it. All, all we did is, they had to put the temporary curb in on his property and as soon as he had the temporary CO, he ripped it out.
I'm gonna try to accommodate a business, particularly a new business, any opportunity I have. If they wanna take advantage of that, I can be as nasty as they choose to be. So, it's their choice.
So we would just wanna remember what we're dealing with when it comes before us finalizing. Because that does, that agreement comes back to this council, does it not?
Did they have parking complaints on Merrick Drive?
I mean, we could certainly make sure.
I mean, we have no agreement.
There's, there's no agreement.
So we don't know how many square feet of land we were gonna give him or anything else, so. So I would wanna see that come back here.
No issue with that.
Kurt, um, Marie said they had, um, quite a few complaints of parking on Merrick Drive. They're putting.
Well, the school, the school, school property.
That's actually I heard, I, I heard that indirectly. I don't know if the police are looking at it in terms of, um, parking along Merrick Drive, that's, that's what I heard.
I also heard a lot that there are, a lot of them parking in the school parking lot.
Yeah, I haven't witnessed it, um, and I heard that there were people in there. I mean, so I, I think that will come up before Plan and Zoning, you know, that whole revision of the site plan. They'll be looking at all of that.
Okay. Everyone good with that, we'll go to, uh, H. So, it would seem that, it would seem that, um, as a town that, uh, isn't done licking our wounds from one of our previous text amendments that was actually brought by a, a prospective, uh, business in town, we went ahead and did the same thing with a text amendment for this s- s- same property, which actually, no, for the whole town. same property, which actually, no, for the whole town, to change something that was basically a one-hundred-year-old, give or take, a one-hundred-year-old law, blue law, whatever. And about fifty years ago, and that was state law, or state blue law, or state whatever, that, you know, these alcohol establishments were gonna be five hundred feet from a school, a parking lot, a church, whatever. So, whether you believe in that or not, you know, I, I have a problem with volunteering as, you know, as many nights as everybody does here, sitting up here, and not being notified that the town of North Branford is the applicant on a text amendment to change that from five hundred feet to zero feet, in this case. And, and I just feel that we maybe need to bring in the, our zoning, you know, bring Kerry in, and have a conversation there. And I do know, and I think that, you know, you know, an elected, the elected board has nothing to do with zoning. And I agree with that, and support it. However, the elected board ought to be, we ought to know when the town, and I'm kinda bothered that it says the town, because everybody that's watching this on TV thinks if the town did it, we did it. So, I would rather see, if the zoning board wants to do a text amendment, say the North Branford Planning and Zoning Commission is doing the text amendment. I really don't like that, saying that the town of North Branford is doing that. And, you know, I mean, I don't know how or what they have to do, but I do know this, where the Board of Ed wasn't notified until after they were caught, or somebody called them out on it. And we weren't notified. And it wasn't, you know, it was just an address on Route eighty that the town of North Branford was an applicant for a text amendment, that, you know, it was, you know, it, you can certainly understand why the propane people were all upset. Because, you know, these things just, you know, and like I said, we didn't finish licking our wounds from that one. And, and we've got another one. But, you know, I don't know whether we can even talk to, whether the town council can talk to the planning and zoning administrator, being notified when they're gonna make a, make a change that's been on the books for a hundred years.
Well, any changes in the name of the town, is what you're saying.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think you need, I think that's just a practice you can, we can implement and say, you know, I don't think there's anything we need to legally check, but as a practice, to say to, I talked with Kerry and say as a practice, that, that, you know, any text amendments or consideration like that, that there be a notification, automatic notification to the council. I don't see there's any...
It gets that simple.
I think it's that simple, yeah. If that's what you, you desire, we can do that. I don't, I've talked to her about the, you know, the, the board, the Board of Ed notification, and I think it's just going that courtesy step, extra step. Not that it's required, because it's not required, right. But it's just as a courtesy, and, and that, that I've talked to her about, and I can certainly add, add this as a, as a practice, just notify and, and make sure everybody's in the loop.
The litter store in Northford Center, was that done by a variance as opposed to P and Z?
No, that was a text amendment.
Well, is there a text amendment? If that, if it was already a text amendment, it doesn't...
I think that had to go with the measuring.
Those five hundred feet.
The way it was measured. The way it was measured.
Well, plus, this is going from that dimension down to zero, correct?
It was measured, just direct line, it was measured by the road or something.
So, we made one text amendment to redefine how we measured five hundred feet. Now, we're making another text amendment to eliminate the five hundred feet, no matter how you measure.
Yes, that's my understanding.
Yeah.
Okay?
Kurt's saying no.
Well, the, the prior one was primarily, included package stores and separations from churches and schools, and it was how you measure, it was the five-hundred-foot rule, which they basically kept, except they, for divided highways, they allowed four hundred feet. Just to give you a little history on the one that's before the Planning and Zoning Commission now, there was a request for a text amendment to allow serving of alcohol, alcoholic beverages at restaurants, less than five hundred feet from a school or church. They denied that. That, that was an application that was submitted by the owner of...
Previous owner.
Of Abate.
Of 285 Fox and Road. They denied that, and basically, the commission said, well, we wanna look at this in terms of, is there anything that we can come forward with that may work, that may have protections and, you know, may address the issue better than the one that was proposed? And, and that's the status right now. They're looking at, is there something they could do? In terms of a regulation change that would allow beer and wine in a, in a restaurant within five hundred feet of a school or church, basically. Public hearing's still open, could be, it's definitely open for the next meeting, and then they, they could continue it beyond that. But that, that's the status, and there's, that's just a little of the history. There's a long history, and I just try to just briefly.
Thanks, Kurt. Do we need a motion on that?
No, I don't think so.
Just a courtesy?
Yeah, well, now, too, I mean, George is...
Well, as long as five of us agree that Michael should tell her that, hey, just drop us a vote.
Knowledge is good, five of us.
Yeah, now, George, you're gonna be liaison, right, to P and Z, so he can also... Yeah, you can communicate that.
I, I just don't understand why it's a courtesy and why we wouldn't just require it as a matter of form.
I think a matter of form would probably be better and safer than a courtesy.
Yeah, because there's no, no reason not just for the, the council to be notified, there's no reason for the Board of Ed to not be notified as a matter of form. Just make a motion.
So, you wanna make that motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that if Planning and Zoning...
Be formally notified?
Yeah, actually, yeah, should formally notice by us for, you wanna do just the town of North Branford text amendments, or any and all text amendments?
I'd do any and all.
Yeah, so, I'll make a motion that Planning and Zoning notifies the town council and the Board of Ed, or all town boards and commissions?
All town boards and commissions.
All town boards and commissions on any and all future text amendments.
I'll second that.
Maybe a little bit too broad. You're talking about a lot of commissions. I think if it comes here...
Yeah, it comes here.
And then we can decide to send it on.
Because we all have liaisons, in theory, to them anyways.
All right, George, I'll, I'll just drop it to, the town council gets notified, and then we can, we can always send it on.
We can be the body that sends it forward.
I just, I just don't want anybody to fall, you know, fall through the cracks.
And actually, though, one of my little pet peeves, I wanna be notified as an agenda item, rather than just something in a folder at our desk.
Simple thing may be, just require the town manager to give us a copy of their agenda as part of our package.
Yeah, but if you get, you get a full-fledged text amendment that comes out, at least we could read it, you know, versus...
Yeah. So, we'll go to the, the town council, we'll just change, instead of all boards, the, the town council is notified of any and all future text amendments.
All right.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mayor Diddy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Arvin?
Yes.
Counselor Kendall Ruff?
Yes.
Counselor Bennett?
Yes.
Counselor Mannan?
Yes.
Counselor Rhodes?
Yes.
I believe we're on to citizen statements and petitions.
Oh, part two. Planning and zoning, commitment. They didn't commit to you guys. Communication. They didn't talk to you guys. Coordinate. They didn't coordinate with you guys. What's it gonna take to stop these holes in the dam of stuff spitting through at the last minute that you can't correct?
The action we just took.
Well, I hope so, because, again, like I say, it's just, it's stomping out fires when they should have taken the matches away in the first place. And I, you know, it's just getting to the point where you're, you're chasing things instead of stopping them in the butt. And that's why I'm frustrated. I, I mean, I, I so appreciate all the time you give, but there, Planning and zoning's over here, Board of Ed's here, you're here, Public Works is there, and everybody's in their little teepee, but nobody's going to the tribal council. Sorry.
My name is Ed Purnair, I'm the chairman of the Board of Fire Commissioners. I just got one quick question. You talked tonight about the Public Safety Communications Committee, and I heard you talk on the Board of Fire Commissioners and the Board of Police Commissioners, is that on the committee? I just, is it the whole board?
No.
No. Two members from the Police Commission, two members from the Fire Commission, two members from the council, and one at large.
Okay, so it'll be two, two members from us.
Thank you.
Equal representation. We don't wanna overstack you.
One more comment. I, I wanna know, what happens if a patron from that restaurant's parking at Jerome Harrison, totally inebriated, runs over somebody on town property? Who is liable?
Well, you should go to the P and Z meeting, Cliff.
Well, I don't know if I should be there in Board of Ed. It's the same night.
Oh, wow. Well, this is, Planning and Zoning seems like what you wanna do.
Well, no, I'm just curious, because there's so many open holes.
That's why we brought it up.
Okay, I mean, again, but is there a scenario, you could get sued because the patron was drunk on town property?
Especially if it's a kid going to basketball practice, or, you know...
You know, and I, I'm not trying to bash you, I just, I just see so many things that could go wrong here. And we're at the eleventh hour, it seems like. And shame on me for not watching those films more closely and trying to figure out what Planning and Zoning's doing.
I also don't think they're under any kind of real strict timeline to make a decision.
Okay, great. Let's, let's coordinate then. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, one quick announcement. I was saddened this week to receive the announcement of Barbara Feely, my staff accountant, that she's gonna retire in May after twenty-two years of service to the town. So, it'll be coming before you, next, Mike and I are working on the job description to come before you to update it for current language, and we'll be posting that job, and hopefully have somebody in, hopefully sometime in April, do a little, you know, three, three weeks of cross-training with her before she leaves early May. So, I'll alert you.
Motion moved to executive session?
So moved.
Second?
Town attorney, town manager?
Uh, the fire chief.
The fire chief.
Did someone second that? I, I voted.
I seconded.
Roll call.
Mayor Diddy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Arvin?
Yes.
Counselor Millar?
Yes.